All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024, at being 1:00 p.m. I'd please ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection. If you would please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, the Constitution of America, and the citizens of this nation.
Thank you. Executive session announcement.
I guess I can do that. On July 24th, at 1:45 p.m., Commissioners Kessling and Burke met with the state operations manager, CYF director, and HR director regarding two employee discipline matters.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the board of commissioners' meeting minutes for 7:23, 24. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Public comment?
I want to say that I'm very much pleased with the commissioners. I think you're doing a great job and that you're not satisfied with the status quo. I really appreciate the decisions that you've made, and they've been big decisions. I wanted to mention two things. I checked in on the elections of 2020, and Blair County, out of 67 counties, came in 54. I have a handout I wanted to give you, so you know how serious it is to have elections done on Election Day.
Thank you.
If you will notice, numbers 1 through 26 got the election done on Election Day. And if you look over to number 54, Blair County got theirs done five days after the election. Now, from people that I've talked to, they said that there was a great amount of mail-in ballots in 2020, like 17,000, that they had to hand count. I want to say that there is a woman by the name of Karen Taylor who's going to be showing Pushback PA how to hand count paper ballots. And I would say there's a need for hand counting of paper ballots in Blair County. And that's going to take place at the Lutheran Home, Evangelical Lutheran Home. Lutheran Homes, Lutheran Church, I'm sorry. The Lutheran Church, Pastor Roy Stewart is the pastor there. And we start at 6 o'clock tonight. We're going to have Karen Taylor, who's going to show us how to hand count paper ballots. And it's going to be greatly needed for this coming election of 2024 to know how to hand count. And like I said, I want to praise you commissioners for doing a great job. And I see the things that you do in the newspaper, and it's newsworthy, and it's great. Applause to you guys for doing a great job. And a personal note to Mr. Kessling, I have a friend who has a son in prison, and you gave your phone to this mother who has a son in prison. I think that's highly commendable in your personal care to people that you serve. I greatly appreciate that.
I just need clarification on that, Randy. When you said I gave my phone to this person...
Well, it was not the personal phone number. Of course, it would be the office. But she was, the mother was pleased that you allowed her to give her grievance, so to speak.
Right.
And that it was addressed promptly. I applaud that, that you're serving the people, and that's great to see. So, once again, this hand counting procedure is going to be given at the Evangelical Lutheran Church on top of Frankstown Mountain at 6 o'clock. It's free of charge. All are welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other public comment? Commissioners' comment?
I wanted to extend congratulations to the Haldiesburg area Summer Baseball League's tenure team for winning the Pennsylvania State Championship this weekend. They are moving on to play in the regionals in Rhode Island.
I do not have a comment today. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go through the consent agenda as outlined in your agenda. Under Item A, payment of the following three warrant lists is outlined. Item B, ratification of the following five warrant lists as outlined in the agenda. C, ratification of total payroll, checks 7:26, 24, in a total amount of $863,217.8. Budget transfers in Item D and E. Item F, children and youth families requesting ratification approval of the use of the courthouse courtyard on July 30th, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. to raise awareness for the Human Anti-Trafficking Response Team, HRT. Resignations, employments, and status change as outlined in your document. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
I am an aye with an extension of the payment to borough of Haldiesburg from one of the ratifications.
Staff reports and special business. Warden Tate.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Abby.
I'm requesting approval of the amended business associate agreement and qualified service organization agreement, date of July 8th, 2024, between the county of Blair, on behalf of the Blair County Prison and Prime Care Medical Incorporated. My understanding is this has little effect on us and has more effect on them. It just outlines how we can share information, how I can receive information from them. But it's really no change to what we currently do.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended business associate agreement in services with county of Blair and Prime Care Medical. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Couple comments and questions, I guess, I have for you, Abby, because I'm a little... Is there a cost to this to the county? Okay.
I think there were some changes that they needed to make on their end. And when I reviewed it and asked the questions that I had, the answer was it's not going to, it has to do with HIPAA and how we share information back and forth, but it's not going to affect how I'm able to receive information that I can pass on, excuse me, to law enforcement or anyone else who may request it.
This is on the computer?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing on all those in favor? Aye.
Our second request is approval for other agreement for purchase under bidding threshold between the county of Blair, on behalf of Blair County Prison and Air Management, Inc., to provide services, including but not limited to HVAC equipment repairs set forth in the county approved purchase orders. Air Management is the only company that we have found that is willing to even look at our air handler unit, let alone work on it. They have done some repairs for us throughout the summer, and we recently did a service contract, our maintenance contract with them, to come once a month and make sure that the air handlers that are running are running properly. But we do have some equipment that needs repairs on those units, so that's what this could be for.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement under the threshold between the county of Blair and the Air Management, Inc., to provide services to the HVAC equipment. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Just some comments. So, everyone else is aware, this is one of the things that we, as a county, have to deal with almost daily. These are units, as my understanding, that were purchased, used from the mall in 1984. So, if we've talked about repairs on these, several of these units this year, once, it's probably been three or four times, and they're still ongoing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We also have two other separate units. So, I block, a work release block that faces directly across from the parking garage, is on its own separate rooftop unit, which is currently in need of replacing. We're waiting for that. And the newest part of K block, the newest part of the jail, is on its own separate unit. So, this air handler takes care of the rest of the building, excluding those two areas.
Any other further comments or questions?
Got to do it because we've got August and September coming up, and it's going to be hot. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a daily battle for us to keep them running and the way they kind of should be running.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Children and youth families, Indy.
Hello. All right. Today, we're requesting approval of fiscal year 2425 agreement for payment of legal services as court-appointed additional counsel between the county of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and Mark Zierfoss Esquire at the rate of 85 an hour.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement of legal services as court-appointed counsel between the county of Blair and Mark Zierfoss Esquire at the rate of $85 per hour? I'll second the motion. You had this before us before, right?
Yeah. He was trying to get $100, remember? So, he agreed to the 85.
All right. Any comments or questions?
Just thank you for going back and looking on that first. Yeah, we are trying to be consistent with all of our folks.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye.
And then the second one, we're requesting approval of amendment number one to the 2024 agreement between the county of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Computer Aid, Inc., to amend the language in the training requirements section. All of the terms and conditions of the existing agreement remain the same.
I may have approval to, with the agreement between Blair County Children, Youth, and Computer Aid, Inc., to amend the language of training requirements.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Any comments or questions, Indy? Thank you.
Thanks.
All in favor? Aye. Sorry, I missed something. Public Works?
I'm going to be Paul today. He had to leave. On behalf of the Public Works Department, Highways, we are requesting approval of a permit GP11 form, which has been prepared by Keller Engineers for bridge number 81, which is on Township Road 364, Chappell Road in Juniata Township. This is as a result of Pendot's request and suggestion that we redirect the funds that we had allocated for this project to a study to be conducted by an independent engineer to determine the options and make recommendations as to how we should proceed with regard to this particular bridge, which is in need of either repair, replacement, or elimination. And so, the engineers will, not our engineers, not Pendot engineers, Pendot will select someone independent who will analyze this bridge and tell us what their recommendations would be. So, I'm just asking for approval for us to sign the permit and move forward.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the general permit application prepared by Keller Engineers for Bridge 81 on Township Road 364 in Juniata Township. May I have a second?
Second?
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Do you want to take item I, Commissioners?
Bridge 73, Bridge 73, the Jug Town Road Bridge. We have, we had conducted a couple of public meetings last fall with the residents of the township to discuss the condition of the Jug Town Road Bridge and get their thoughts. We also, recently, within the last two months, I met with each of the township supervisors individually to get their thoughts on Jug Town Road Bridge. And the, similar to Bridge 81, there are only a couple of options. One is to continue to repair it, but Bridge 71, we make repairs, but they do not really fix the problem, so we're constantly repairing it. Another possibility would be to replace it with another bridge, which, of course, would be quite different. We kind of joke, this is Commissioner Burke's favorite bridge because it has a little sidewalk, and it's a one-lane bridge, which is pretty cool and pretty quaint. Unfortunately, it can't quite deal with the traffic that we have today. So, a new bridge would not have a place for people to walk, and it would not be only one lane wide. It would be a regular bridge. And it would be quite costly to install a new bridge there. The third possibility that we had been given by the engineers was to remove the bridge. The one end of it is right along County Road 101, so there's not really, it's only maybe, I don't know, eight feet between the edge of the road and the bank of the river, so there's no buildings or structures of any kind along there. But on the other side of the bridge there, I don't know how many feet, but there are a couple of houses, but there is a large area where a cul-de-sac could be installed that would allow people to turn around and to then use some, the other roadway, the other means of leaving that particular neighborhood to get to wherever, to the Sheets and East Freedom, to go to Martins, to Roaring Spring or Martinsburg, or to come back around and get onto County Road 101. The, because of the costs involved, the preferred recommendation from the engineers was to remove the bridge and install a cul-de-sac. I understand that that is not popular with the folks in the neighborhood. We understand that, and we understand that there are issues that they have with the Township Road, which is called Mountain Road. But the road is not owned by the county, so that's not something that we can address. We just own the bridge on the Township Road, and it has reached the end of its useful life. And based on the recommendation from the engineers, I would propose that we follow that recommendation, remove the bridge, and install a cul-de-sac. So, that's the information that I have.
So, are you, you are then looking for the approval to do that today?
Yes, I would make a motion that we do.
So, as I understand it, the motion would be to remove the existing Bridge 73 and not replace that bridge, but install a cul-de-sac in that area?
That is correct. I'm sorry, I should have put that. I should have forward.
For discussion purposes, I'll make a motion to approve the removal of Route 73 for a cul-de-sac. May I have a second?
Amy motioned, and you're the second.
I'm second. Thanks for clarifying. So, Lindsey, I hate to put you on the spot. So, the funding, as I understand it, for the bridge replacements is funded not from the general fund. Is that accurate? Okay. So, when we're looking at a bridge like this, and many others, if we, do you know, and I guess the question is to you that I don't know at this point in time, is that the bridges that we maintain annually, does that money come out of our general fund?
Except for the highway. Work that's done by the highway. But that bridge is assigned, that work is assigned to the bridge. There may be some material.
We have the highway department that performs the work in caring for the bridges, maintaining them. We have inspections of the bridges. We do required maintenance to the bridges. I have no idea what the highway department costs us, actually. I've never, I shouldn't say that. I do the budget every year, but it's all part of another, so it's, I look at it all combined together, not as a separate unit.
Do we capture those costs?
No, they don't capture. The majority of those costs, I'd say at least 99% of those costs would be captured under the bridge cost.
For maintenance and repair, upkeep? Can we further discuss?
Wouldn't you go further discuss? That's what we're supposed to be doing.
Motion, I mean, can we?
Can I ask a question about that? So, I think this was on the MPO's tip, the Bridge 73 funds were coming from the tip. So, if the decision is not to replace the bridge, is that money available to use for the cul-de-sac project, or does that money go away? If you know, I don't know if you know the answer to that.
I believe, oh. I am not certain either, but I believe that what we would do is go through the same procedure that we just are doing with Bridge 81, where we ask to assign those funds to a different project. That's what we've discussed in engineering meetings. We have, as you know, many bridges. They're very expensive, and we do receive funding to help us with that. But we have, we can only address so many at a time, and fortunately, we have received significant help from Pendot in the last couple of years. They have replaced a couple of our county bridges for us, Bridge 70 last year, and I can't remember the numbers, but over the last couple of years, there've been a couple of those. But keep in mind, these are still taxpayer funds that are paid to Pendot that we receive back and we then use for these various projects. So, we use them for whichever bridges we need to use them at that particular time, whichever ones need to be fixed, replaced, removed, whatever. It's all taxpayer money.
It is all taxpayer money. Based on, there's still some questions, I think, I would like to amend the motion to table this for further discussion until the next commissioners' meeting.
I didn't make, oh, yeah. No, I didn't make the motion. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Okay. So, you want to table it?
I would like to amend it just to, for further discussion, because there's still some funding that I need, I would like to know more about, and I think there's, you know, to clarify with, if the money is moved, is it still available, or can it go to the cul-de-sac, those sort of things that I'm not sure that we do know the answers to that at the moment.
That's fine. We can move it to next meeting.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend and move it for further discussion to the next meeting. May I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor? Aye. Discussion for formation of Blair County Trail and Recreation Authority. The commissioners, like most of the decisions that we make, just like the bridges, it's very complicated because we have, I think, 70 bridges that the county is responsible for, and as Commissioner Webster had stated, it's taxpayer money regardless, and we're trying to be mindful of that. With that being said, we, earlier in this year, we've had a discussion, open discussion on trails, which we had the largest attendance that we've ever had at a meeting. And this continues to be a discussion from the community as to where we are, and we continue to have discussions with it, and we think, we believe, we found a path forward that would not impact the taxpayers. We would be looking to use ARPA funding for a couple of years that we would be able to do this, and then, that then leads us into an avenue where we could use bed tax funds to further the authority on. That would buy us some time as a county to get an authority established and running to meet the needs that we see at this point and what are being pointed out to us for those people asking for this. And it also gives us the ability to, after two or three years, to determine and to see whether or not this is something that is bearing fruit, so to speak, or is being helpful. So, based on that, I would like to make a motion to form the Blair County Trail and Recreation Authority. May I have a second?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
All those in favor? Aye.
We need to discuss.
For discussion.
Have discussion.
Discussion first.
I don't care. Yes, we've talked about this, and we have some grand plans. My only hesitation in just creating something at this point is we don't have any kind of a management agreement or directives as to what the authority would be doing. I read the municipal authorities' document that Commissioner Burke had obtained for us. Thank you very much. That was very, very helpful. And it's fascinating, and there are a lot of things that we can do, a lot of things we cannot do. And I think that I want to know what we, exactly what we want to allow this authority to do, what restrictions we want to put on this authority, because if we don't outline things in particular, things automatically can happen, and we then lose control. So, although I've been supportive all along about the whole idea of a trail and recreation authority... and recreation authority, and pulling all these things together so that everything's going in the same direction, I, I would hesitate to actually create something until we have an outline of what exactly we're doing.
So, I, I agree with, I think, kind of where Commissioner Webster is going. I think that all three of us support forming the entity ultimately, but that a lot of discussion needs to go into the details of that, and I believe, you know, for further specific action on an agenda, I think there are existing studies currently out there, Allegany Outdoors Study that just was finished earlier this year, and the Greenways and Open Spaces Plan, both through Southern Allegheny's Planning and Development Commission, which support, you know, the need for long-term stewardship of the trails. It's clear that, you know, our surrounding counties are doing a lot in this area, that we are a little bit behind, and I think we all have a desire to catch up with them, and to work with them in making sure that we have, you know, the trail networks going through our county, and that our, our residents and businesses are receiving the benefit of that. I think, you know, we obviously had our, our prior public meeting where we had a resounding, you know, call from the community in different, different trails, you know, different variety of uses for the trails, all echoed that. And it's clear we need kind of one county-wide organization to drive those projects and coordinate things, and coordinate, you know, obtaining grants and getting things moving. So I think, you know, definitely am supportive. I think, short of like technically forming an entity today, I think we should perhaps, you know, have a resolution to move forward with the solicitor's help in, in figuring out what, you know, what the terms and, and everything of that would be. I mean, I do think, in some sense, municipal authorities, no matter how you define them, by definition, we would be giving up some control. So, the, you know, the alternative to that is having a county department to do it, but I don't see us being able to support that at this point. So I think the authority is the next best thing that we can do, and obviously, the Commissioners retain the ability to appoint the board members to those authorities, and that, with our existing authorities, that is our method of control, and that has always been what I was taught, was kind of our sole, sole guarantee aside from potentially funding. So, I guess that's, those are my thoughts.
A lot goes into this.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, and I guess, forgive me for, if we were to make or create an authority, or to pass a motion for an authority, I, I understand that we don't have all those things, but that would give us the ability to then get into that discussion. We do, I think, have the right to, and I think it is, I agree with you, that we need to have clear direction if an authority is created to specifically outline what that authority is. And I say that because we deal with current authorities that we may not, as a county, agree with the direction, and so we, we have to deal with that, because it's, it has been created. So understanding that, we would do that, you know, I was, I guess I was under the understanding, if we could just, if we would agree to do it, form it, then we could have the discussions and create an outline what, what specifically they were to do and not to do. So I don't know if that, or do we have to do that? I guess I'm asking the other board members, is that something that we have to do specifically, outline what that is before we would create an authority?
I think we would, because if, if we don't have a framework within which we're going to work, then we've got something created that has powers, but doesn't, isn't really real. I, I, that's kind of, I know that makes no sense, I'm sorry, I don't really know how to explain it. But from reading the, the information regarding authorities, it's, it seems that upon creation that there is an entity that exists, and I hate to just create that entity without having, having the framework that we would. And I think that if we, there might be a way of approving something today that would allow us to at least consult with the solicitor, or talk about, you know, how we want to, how we want to form this, create it, how many members, you know, all those different details that are very important to, you know.
I can only, and I don't know what went before the creation of the Convention Center Authority. I do know that there is an ordinance, and I was looking for our ordinance books yesterday, and was having trouble locating them, but it was done by ordinance, and obviously, there's a public hearing process that has to happen, but that set forth like who the initial members were, and what the scope was, which I think the scope and who are the members are the main, you know, items of concern. But, there's, you know, additional things that need to happen. So, the entity is created, articles of incorporation have to be filed. If we're doing that, obviously, those are actions we would approve on, in a public meeting. But I think, in terms of the details of what is contained in those documents, I'm not sure what their process was, whether they did that, like in individual discussion with solicitors, if there's, you know, I'm not sure what that process was.
I know that the statute requires that thirty days before we actually create, at least thirty days, we have to have a, we have to notify, put a notice probably in the newspaper that we're, we're going to do this on whatever date thirty days from now. So we haven't done that part yet, and so that kind of impedes us from doing a whole lot today. But, I, I would think that, I don't know, you know, we can make a motion to have discussion about it. We've, we can already, always have discussion, I think, but I think we need some guidance from our solicitor a little bit, too.
I think this was like the same discussion that we had regarding Bridge Seventy-Three, so I'm willing to make, amend the motion to table it for further discussion, and not only amongst ourselves, but with the solicitor too, moving forward. I think both of you brought up good reasons to do that. It's, it's clear, as we said here, all three Commissioners are in favor of it, but ensuring that we do it in the manner that we are, I have no problem with that. So I, I will make a motion to amend, I'll make, I'll amend the motion to table this for further discussion. May I have a second?
Well, maybe we want to just authorize that we can advertise and move forward with the notice, do you want to do something like that? And then that way, we won't have to come back to another meeting to authorize the advertisement. But it doesn't mean we have to advertise it tomorrow or the next day, but, but that would at least, we would have that part preliminarily approved. That might help us, and keep us on track, help us stay on task with that, but, but I don't really want to bring it up so far. I don't know, it's just a thought, however you want to, you're making the motion, I'm just thinking out loud.
I think that we, well, I, I think we can probably just wait, and maybe keep it on the agenda for discussion, and we can give updates on where we are in the process, if that would make sense, because I just don't want to, we could, we could say, yes, we're going to advertise, but I think we need an idea of what the timeline will be before we can do that, so there are some particulars there. And I think, you know, we do meet every week, so.
That's true.
Okay, so we're sticking with, amend the motion to table this particular subject, the Blair County Trail and Recreation Authority for further discussion. May I have a second?
I second the original one, I can't remember.
If you didn't, you didn't now. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Old business. Colonel Dunkel.
I'm here today to gain the approval of the county commissioners to allow the court to apply for a grant from the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts. The grant would be for twenty-five thousand dollars, which would be used at the district magistrate's offices to install alarms. I'm not going to talk about the courthouse this time. So this, again, is just being able to apply for the grant. I've spoken to them, I've socialized the concept, and they are very good with it, and that's exactly what they want that money to be used for. So each year, it's, it goes between the courthouse and the magistrate's office, and it's usually for twenty, but we squeeze them to get five more.
Good job.
I didn't talk about a bridge or a trail.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, to submit the application from the AOPC security grant to be used towards installation of a duress alarm system at the magistrate, district judge's office, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
So, I brought this up before, I just want to make sure that people understand, and make sure that I'm correct. Currently, and prior to this, there have been no duress alarms at the MTJ offices. Is that correct?
No, there were, but they're not functional.
Not functional.
They were put in by Betway, and we found that to, if we went that course of action, it's the standalone system. So I'm going to talk about the courthouse. If we go with the path that we're on, it'll be the same system that's currently in this building, it's going to be upgraded, and all of them will be tied to the nine-eleven center, and also the sheriff's radio network, twenty-four-seven. So it, it's an inclusive system for the county.
And when an alarm is, when there's a duress alarm, it's activated, it would go to, obviously, with the nine-one-one center, it would go to the local police department serving that area, in addition to the sheriff's office here. So it would be multiple.
And when necessary, it would go to the Pennsylvania State Police. Like Frankstown does not have a police department.
This obviously was on the agenda last week, and my question was, because I think the whole project is more than the twenty-five thousand, so the question I had at the time was how the rest of it is going to be funded, because I don't want to leave you without, you know, your full project. So I was able to determine that we believe we will submit for the P-COMP grant, which is our workers' compensation carrier, since the primary, primary, one of the goals is protection of the employees, safety of the employees, and so that, they have a grant program that we will be seeing a sort of companion application for those grant funds in the future.
Yes, Commissioner.
So that answered my question, just wanted to clarify for, from last week.
I, I will just say, I apologize for saying "security," when I meant to add "safety" in there. But they go together so well.
Sometimes they are the same.
But then there was questions of P-COMP and PCOR.
Right, right.
So there was.
No problem. So we just, I just wanted to clarify that before we got too far down the road, so, yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, everybody, for explaining.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.